All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's four, seven, eight. This is the Encourage GBOS Quarterly Meeting. I am Jennifer Wingard, co-chair of GBOS and land use supervisor. And Mike Edgington.
Yeah, Mike Edgington, I'm Housing Economic Development Supervisor.
All right, and Brianna?
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and Fire Department Supervisor.
And can we have one of the people at the table? Do you see themselves?
Sure.
Tiffany Briggs, Acting Real Estate/HLB Director.
Emma Gibney, Heritage Land Big Land Management Officer.
Zach Johnson from Anchorage Assembly.
Kyle Kelly-Ger with Service Area Manager.
Artie Tyler, Service Area Staff.
Okay, and online?
Kent.
Good afternoon, Kent Colehays Municipal Manager.
And Ryan?
Yeah, good afternoon, Ryan Yell Planning Department.
Okay, Jonathan Taylor?
Jonathan Taylor, HLB.
Okay, so I don't recognize the phone number of 317-3931. Do we have anyone else online that'd like to introduce themselves?
This is Craig Lyon, the Planning Director. Thank you.
The Encourage Board of Supervisors, as communities, subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and on Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. At this point, I'd like to know if we have any, if we're going to approve the agenda?
It's approved.
It's approved.
I'll second it.
All right, do we have any changes or adjustments? All right, I consent that that agenda is approved. The public is encouraged to ask questions, provide comments. Please raise your hand, we need to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public. But keep your comments focused on the business under discussion and please be respectful of everyone's opinions. So with all of that, then, well.
Hello? Here, I'd walk down here. I forgot it was in this room, so. The meeting invites us teams and then below it said board here, so it's a short tour to this room.
All right, should we jump right into item number one, the HLB items? Update on HLB One and Five-Year Plans.
Yeah, I'll start here. So we sent in the large set of comments about the one-year work plan, five-year project plan, I think that kind of important. And I acknowledge the responses to all of those. I think the, there's one item we'd still like to, I think, continue to discuss here, which is the, or one item in specifically, which is the industrial park. I think the, my understanding from the document and conversation to the advisory committee last month was that the plan is to look at several different options and propose at least one this year and then execute that on next year. But I think that was where we were two years ago, maybe even three years ago. Definitely one year ago, definitely at that same point, year to eighteen, I'd say. And I think the, there's a lot of frustration, there's been no real progress on that, or not enough progress, I should say. We were looking back at earlier resolutions, and I believe it was 2018, in March 2018, we proposed a resolution, if we really wanted to speak, if we really wanted to see a way forward to phase two and phase three. And, you know, we're still probably a year ago, a year away from actually starting that, so that's going to be about six years from now. So what can we do to help, I guess is one of the questions. One significant change from previous years is that the service area itself, which is part of the municipality, it's a, it's a part of the administration, we have the power now to, to both tax and, you know, the poll, and, sorry, propose policies as well around housing and economic development, and clearly industrial park falls within that. So I guess from, not an official board position, but at least not official request, it's, you know, let's see this as a really a partnership and not, not sort of, you know, we're acting as a community council, as purely an external voice, we're actually in the, in the organizational part of this discussion. There are a lot of very specific problems, I think, that leaseholders, or leaseholders, sorry, permit holders in the industrial park are facing as well. And the sense I get from that group is frequently they're not really interested. And again, I acknowledge it's been a very, it's been a very difficult year and a half, and it's not a criticism of anyone, it's just that's where we are. So, you know, what can we do to help, I guess is the question. Obviously, I don't need a complete answer now, we'll have that discussion in the next several weeks or months. I think though, I don't think we as a board have had a chance to really sit down and discuss whether there was anything more that came out of the responses to our comments. And I wasn't, unfortunately, at last week's meeting, but I don't think we got to that point.
No, that was not on the agenda. We haven't had a chance to discuss that.
Okay, so then maybe other comments? And, sorry, I see the second point there as well. And we also had a quite a large number of questions that came from hotels and other associated boards of HLB, but again, have been sort of, have been asking for the best part of the year. I'd just like to, all right, and thank, thank HLB in particular, that for basically getting all of those things addressed and answered in the last couple of weeks. It was good to see, finally see the map that we've been asking for a couple of years. And I think we've got bifurcation agreement as well. And I think while, again, it'd be good to see more of the RNP, I think it was, like my sense at least, it was over and back to, I think, all the other things that this was the last one. You know, I believe.
So can we back up and see?
Yeah.
To the industrial park?
Yes.
Any discussion?
So that's one thing that's still up, so.
Sure.
First, can I ask, when you said the 2018 March resolution, is that a GBOS resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Cool, just because I'd like to look that up.
Sure, I can say it.
Okay. So I think that GBOS, or sorry, that the industrial park is definitely my priority for, now that the, once the work plan gets adopted, I think that that's a priority that I would like to see taken care of, because I think that it's kind of, no one is happy right now. I think that we would like to see it, you know, more productive. I think that GUR would like, would like to see it more productive. So I think as of right now, we're going to get all the people we need to in a room and see what our different options are, you know, and brainstorm, what are those options? Should we try to finish, you know, phase two and three like the preliminary plan from 2014 originally, you know, thought it could be? Should we take what we have right now and sell it? Should we try to improve it a little bit? Like, there's just so many different options and scenarios that we, you know, it would be nice to know how much those things would cost, you know, how much of an interest from the community there is from that. And, you know, kind of just do a cost benefit analysis, I guess. And that, that's about getting the right people in the room and then bouncing it off of the right people also. And I think at some point, getting feedback from GBOS and even the permies who are currently there would be a good idea.
I think we, in the letter we sent to Lance earlier this year, we suggested actually a sort of formal meeting.
Yeah, so maybe.
I think just to address both short-term and the meeting terms issues.
Sure, yeah, I think that sounds like a good idea. You know, I think that the idea, the best idea, the best path forward might be something that's brainstormed by somebody who's already there, a permie, or, you know, we've had some permies approach us with, with ideas and we've kind of tried to see if there's a path forward that we could wiggle, you know, make that happen. So I think, I think there's a lot of people thinking of what, you know, what could be there in the future, what's the best option.
Okay. Is, can we actually schedule? Do we have a, or do you have a schedule already for when you have that, that meeting in the minds?
No, but we, I, I have it here, like, on the page from today in my notebook, and I'm going to schedule it. So it's on, it's on the top of my to-do list, is to get the people in the room to brainstorm about what I can do to help find a path forward.
Okay, great. And then I think maybe a, a meeting with permies would be a good thing to do in parallel to that.
Yes.
Maybe some of them would be involved in both, I don't know. So I think that there was a, at least a desire, I think, at the last HLBAC meeting to present the options for path forward this year's schedule. So is that kind of where you are in terms of time scale?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think everything is kind of, you know, we really want to get our work plan adopted.
Yes.
And so once that happens, like, that's our top priority right now, is get the work plan adopted, because that's way overdue. And then, and then, you know, ideally, we would like to have our 2024 work plan adopted in the first quarter of 2024. So we're going to use our 2023 plan as kind of a jumping off point to just kind of resubmit it in the first quarter and, you know, add stuff to it as needed, but. But yes, I think the GUR industrial park is, is the main thing on the list, to really come up with a plan, act, not to say, oh, we're going to do this, but actually come up with some concrete ideas of what are the steps we can take to make this a more functional area for the community.
Yeah, yeah, something actionable. Okay, thank you. There's more I could say about this, but I think, I think we're at a point where this is at least a path forward over the next, the next couple of months, so.
Yeah.
I'll just be optimistic that we get progress.
Well, I, I would, I would certainly need to, but I would, I would like to applaud that effort and impetus behind the, the whole idea of having a collaborative effort. Really, thank you if, if we could find a way to work with the Leesys and work towards creative solutions, it's spectacular. I know there are a lot of ideas, but I do think creative solutions could be one group with strengths, pretty good at that.
And weakness.
And weakness sometimes, but, but strength. And there is so much interest in progress happening here that is not controversial that we need changes there in development, so thank you for that. So that leaves, before I move on from B, or actually before we can go to B, Brianna, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not, thank you. I think you both said it very well. We look forward to meeting about the industrial park. Thank you.
All right, and so moving on to B and, and the responses, yes, definitely, thank you for those replies. I did have a question about the bifurcation agreement, which looked a little like it was put together. It didn't, it didn't necessarily look like that was, I just wanted to ask if that was one document signed at one time, because it looked collated.
Okay, so in the bifurcation agreement, it, there is actually a section that says that it can be signed, so in counterparts, so that's why it happened, because Pomeroy is in Canada, and so they had to sign it, not in person. So they, they signed it, mill it to us, Connie might sign it in seven minutes. So that's why there's two signatures.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Do we have anything else on that before I move forward?
Just to, I'd just like to say thank you again for the, for the chat while getting in.
Okay, so item number two, can we talk about the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan? Do you like to jump into this one as well?
Yeah, I'll start. So I'm glad there are two people from planning here. So my understanding of how the plans work, and if I'd like a correction when I'm wrong, is there's, there's a municipal wide comprehensive plan. And within that, there are four comprehensive, major comprehensive plan levels, so four comprehensive plans, one of which is the 2020 for the Anchorage Bowl, updated 2040 land use plan, but that only applies to the bowl, doesn't apply to other communities outside of the bowl. So in parallel, there's a comprehensive plan for Juguet Eagle River, which was written in the early 90s and updated in 2006. There's a plan to Turnigannam, which was, I believe, the early 2010s. And there's a comprehensive plan for Gerwood, which was written in 95, and we're in the process of updating it, but it's still the 95 plan in, in action. And then underneath that, you can have functional plans, you can have what truly are area or district or neighborhood plans. And then underneath that, at least in Gerwood, we have sort of area, we have master plans, area master plans, or institutional master plans, I think they're called, and area master plans, which are really about specific projects, and not about the general, it's normally one landowner and one, one project. And with the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan, it ended up sort of occupying both that second and third level, both being projects, so it was used as a project specific plan, which originally is a district plan. And there are different requirements for each, and there are different requirements for how they apply and when they change. And, you know, if, if a new project comes along that's very different from the project which is originally proposed for a, for a project level plan, then there's a process for updating. It's a different process for a district plan. And what happened really, it was written as a district plan, then we got the statement from, I think the, from, I don't know, that it was, it could function as a project plan. And then if it had functioned as a project plan, it was clearly for a different project to the one proposed, so there would have been a natural update process. But at that, that point, after accepting it as a project plan, it suddenly became the district plan, it didn't need the update process. So it's performed, so it ended up being in these two different spaces with different sets of requirements, and depending what the question was, it was flipping between one and the other. And not having the constraints which apply to a particular plan if it could switch, and then getting the benefits of one and not the other. So this was kind of a fairly broken situation. And one of the things we asked a few months ago was to at least clarify which it's going to, which it really functions as, and what then the rules would be for updating a project change, if it really was to be used as a neighborhood plan, if it really was to be used as a project plan, sorry. And we've got really, a feedback at all, except let's follow further in planning, so that's where we are today. I know we've had this discussion a few times, and Ryan and Craig have both been part of that, so I probably don't need to say anymore. I think they probably understand the detail of what, definitely much more than I do. So I'd probably, I would set the stage, and we'd probably set it out for perhaps a responsible planning or from HLB, I don't know.
Yeah. Shall we, shall we start with planning? Do we have someone from planning who can address me now?
Yes, Ben, Joe, this is Ryan Yell from the Planning Department. I do apologize, Mike, could you restate the question? I was listening as tentatively as I could for a question.
The question is, I think we, I think we've also communicated this to, with this question to you in the past, but I'll restate it now. So a district plan has a different goal and a different mechanism for update than an area master plan. In particular, an area master plan has to go through an update process if the project it was originally written for changes significantly, either in scope or in number of units or area, and a number of other parameters. District plan less so, it's much more of a big picture, long-term issue. So we had the, we faced the problem that the, while the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan was written as a neighborhood plan, it was also functioning, we were told, as a project plan or as an area master plan, yet it didn't have to go through any of the update processes as an area master plan would have to be, because it was simultaneously, when it came to that question, it was suddenly a district planning. So because there are the sort of two different purposes, have different goals, and have a different process for the level of detail they have to cover and how to update them, we definitely feel that there was a certain degree of bait and switch here. And what we would like and what we requested was that can these plans be identified as which role we're actually performing? And not have these multiple plans against. So I guess the question for you is, which role does it perform? What's the update process for this plan going forwards?
Yeah, sure, so Ben and Chair, I'd be happy to answer that question. So the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan serves as the area master plan for that area, and that's clearly stated on the front cover of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan. I'm a bit confused, because I don't believe we've ever referred to it as a district plan. It has always been an area master plan. And the reason that we did not require any updates to it or modifications to it is because simply that's just not how the, the mechanics of this process with Holton Hills works. We're going to, we would have been reviewing the Holton Hills project against compliance with the area master plan, and then calling out any non-compliance issues. We wouldn't be saying, update the plan to meet the development, it's the other way around. The plan is going to dictate how the development should be done.
Okay, so it was, it's never, although neighborhood land use plan is in the title, it's never fulfilled that purpose, or at least it is not currently fulfilling that purpose.
So through the chair, it's very clearly stated on the front cover of the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan that it serves as the area master plan, and it does give the code citation from chapter nine and title 21. So it's very clear to us that it is intended and is serving as the area master plan for that area.
Okay, thank you. So that clarifies at least, it's, it's serving one purpose, not two. And I, I agree with you, the, the way this would normally be done is where there was an application, the area master plan would then be used to compare to the application, and I think at that point, there would clearly be differences. Are there any other plans that we have that are, is there any other ambiguity? I'm just trying to think, I think there was something else we identified as a potentially, as an ambiguous, in a similar ambiguous situation, when I don't have my notes in front of me.
Off the top of my head, Brianna, does this ring any bells for you?
Uh, maybe not in agenda item number two. I'm thinking of number three right now, so, no.
Yes, all right.
What I'd like to do is just, so we had a resolution, I think we should go back to that resolution, I think this has answered the question, but I think we should go back to the resolution and make sure it does answer the question, and then follow up with the planning if there are any further questions. But I think this, I think this has been really helpful, actually, to clarify this is only an area master plan.
Okay. I, I'm curious about how that relates to our quest to, to render it null and void as far as plans for that area, because it was written at a, at a time that preceded the major economic and real estate realities that have changed thanks to short-term rentals.
So I think that would be, sorry, I think that would be a very good question for planning, what would happen if another project, if a project comes along in that area that doesn't conform to, that does conform to the area master plan, or it doesn't? Do we have to take into account the time difference between these two things, and the changes in other contexts?
Right. So I mean, I, I think planning, we're always going to have questions about what we can do about the premise that the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan is in effect in perpetuity when it was written at a time, as I said, before Airbnb was even invented. Is that something that can be addressed at all right now?
Yeah, so through the chair, though, any adopted plan typically lives a life of approximately 20 years, but that being said, that plan lives until it's determined to be null and void, or it's replaced. So as of today, I mean, we would be reviewing any proposed project in this area against compliance with the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan, because that is the valid underlying area master plan for the, for this part of Gerwood. If there were certain factors that GBOS wanted to have revisited, or updates to the plan that they would like to be done, certainly there are ways of doing that, but, you know, just getting back to the original question, if, if land use entitlement were to be applied for within the boundaries of that area master plan, we would be reviewing that development for compliance against the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan.
Okay, and so one follow-up question on that, if I may? The, the, if GUR Board Supervisors or the GUR community in general is interested in having that plan revisited, am I correct in understanding that that is owned by the Assembly, and so we would have to go through the Assembly to have it declared null and void, is that your understanding too, Mike? Yeah, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so through the chair, any modifications to area master plans has to go through the original approval process, as outlined in code, which involves community meeting, planning and zoning commission, and assembly action. In this particular case, it's kind of a unique scenario, I don't, I don't know that we've ever had a plan deemed null and void without being replaced, but my assumption would be that because the Assembly had approved it, the Assembly would have the ability to revoke it, but certainly there's other ways, you know, maybe doing an, an update prior to, instead of a complete revocation. But I'll leave that up to the, to GBOS to decide that.
One more question, do you please go ahead, please?
Yeah, well, I actually had two questions, should we alternate? Just to your last point, Ryan, the, we were, I think we were told from, I believe planning, but maybe not, that because this was initially funded by and owned by HLB, HLB could request an update that we could not. If that's not the situation, that's very helpful new information. My second point is that while, I think, my understanding is if other components of, for example, when the comprehensive plan is updated for Gerwood, then any existing plans such as this plan, if it's no longer in compliance with a comprehensive plan, would be interpreted within the context of the comprehensive plan. So although it wouldn't be changed necessarily, it wouldn't be a question of going in and updating and changing it, it would still have to be interpreted within the framework of the, you know, a newly adopted comprehensive plan, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's an interesting question. If there were drastic differences between the Crow Creek Neighborhood Land Use Plan and a newly updated land use plan map, the most recent approval, the majority of cases would prevail. The most recent plan, I should say, plan approval. But then, just kind of a point of clarification going back, you know, with HLB being the landholder in this area, you know, they, they would be able to dictate what, what they want to do for planning purposes on their, on their land. So GBOS could have a resolution requesting an update, but GBOS, to my understanding, cannot direct an update.
Thanks. But HLB can, is that correct? Sorry, Ryan, just to clarify, HLB can request that update?
Through the chair, HLB as the landowner, they, they can dictate how they want to, what planning activities they want to participate, you know, participate in. If they would like to do an update, they absolutely can, but they would be the ones that'd have to initiate that.
Okay. Any other questions? And how about Brianna, you're good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is that all that we have on agenda, item number two? Then I will move on to review status of SOA Airport Land and Municipal Land Use Code for Gerwood.
That's done as well, as well. This, this is fun, this is a fun thing. So for context, I think as probably everyone is aware, there is a lease proposal from an organization called Glacier Valley Lodge to develop, or to lease 11 acres of land from others, Gerwood Airport Land, and develop a lodge, accommodation, some aviation facilities, and I think some recreation facilities as well. And the, the sort of core question that comes, that's behind this, I think, is originally the Aviation Leasing Department in, group within the Department of Transportation had a 30-day comment period, and no details really were of the proposal going to be released during that comment period, and that would be the only opportunity for public input. The DOT have, insist and have a opinion from the, from Assistant Attorney General, who was working with DOT back in the 90s, to state that municipal land use code does not apply to state airport land. does not apply to state airport land. My reading of, my reading, I'm not a lawyer, but my reading of the, of the statute they're stating, it doesn't say that at all. And I know this has been a question, which has been bouncing around particularly for land for Ted Stevens. But the situation at Ted Stevens is kind of different, and there isn't really an assertion of municipal land use in the same way, because most of that land has been, is in this transitional status and wasn't really addressed in the, in the Title 21 update. And in, in Girdwood, it's a very different situation as well, because the land use code actually says, you know, this is the state's problem. In Girdwood, we have a particular zone, and we have, we have claims about acceptable use, et cetera, et cetera. So in Girdwood, we have municipal land use code that applies and was relatively recently updated or adopted. And yet, we have the landowner, state DOT, basically saying, we don't care. We're going to do what we want with the land. And this seems to set up a kind of a very, very obvious conflict. And I think what we're asking here of the administration is, what's kind of your position here? Because we as a community believe that, while I'm definitely as an active official, you know, I'm following what code says, and what code says, is there's a land use, there's municipal land use rules which apply here. And we have a landowner and potentially a less-y of that owner who basically is saying they don't care. They're going to do what they want to do. And this, we can't necessarily go ahead and put anything else ourselves. But at some point, if development starts, and they still have not entered the municipal land use process, I'm wondering what the administration's position generally is about this topic. And I guess that's a question both for planning and for, and for municipal managers. Glaring at me now.
Not glaring, Mike. I, this is, this is pretty new to me, so I wouldn't be able to say what the administration's position is. We can figure it out. I think this is something which is not used in planning. So maybe it's a, maybe it's a question for the planning director as well.
Through the chair, I would like to ask Craig if she's able to comment on this.
Yes, Craig, do you have a comment about this, this question? Or anybody else?
He's muted. He's a star six here on the phone.
While we're waiting, I should say, I mean, I acknowledge that if there is, this is one of these topics that could end up going to, you know, through legal action, et cetera. So maybe this is an inappropriate place to discuss it. If it is an inappropriate place to discuss it, then I would be interested in, you know, a future detective session, something to, to understand the, understand if there are options, or if things were already in progress.
And is Craig the only one who can address this at all?
Madam Chair, this is Ryan Yelfman, Planning Department. Mr. Lyon may be having some audio issues, so I'm just working that out with him.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I wonder if, can I get this resolved, whether we can move on to something else, come back?
Yeah, let's.
Are you able to hear me now? This is great?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Boy, I had star six as well as muting on my phone, so double duty there. Clearly, I should not be left on my own sometimes. So my understanding of this issue is that we were asked, as it relates to Ted Stevens Airport, if our land use code is, are we able to deal with things on the airport property? And they came back, the answer from MOA Legal was that we do not have jurisdiction over taxiways, runways, and I think there was one other thing that was closely related to those two, taxiways and runways. But otherwise, the code should apply. But that kind of is a question for MOA Legal on that opinion to send it out. But that was my understanding of it. Taxiways, runways, and other things closely related to that. But otherwise, we would have, our land use code should apply.
I think the other, the other area that's mentioned in the state statute is navigation aids. Was that the other item?
That, that may, yeah.
Okay. So is, is that a, is that opinion available publicly, or is that a not available?
Uh, that's a question for MOA Legal, or, or Mr. Cole Hayes, I guess, but maybe one of those folks.
In general, internally generated legal opinions are not releaseable.
Okay.
I, we can check and see if we rely pretty heavily on the advice of municipal attorney as to whether to release opinion, whether to release them, because, not that we necessarily wouldn't want to share it with you, but we don't want to damage our, our position on other issues that may seem unrelated.
Understood. The, obviously, what we, in this situation, there is a public opinion that says the opposite, and that's the only public document that are able to address the legal, the legal issues. So we've definitely, I've definitely heard many people assert very strongly that the state can do anything they want to do, because they have an opinion that says so. Was there people with the state? Both people with the state and other people. Yes, we want to do that. I actually had the opportunity to meet the, with the lawyer who wrote it a couple of days ago. Yes, but also other people use that as a, as a justification. So it's, it's a little hard to make the case otherwise, when you're thinking public is, is stating, so it does not obviously a solid conclusion that's put in there. So, yeah, so, so my understanding, to take this one step further then, my understanding is, until there is development on the land, this is kind of a moot question. You know, there's no, nothing's being done wrong until development starts. And then the point at which development starts, there will be development without a land use permit, and then it becomes, then there are problems. Is that the correct way to interpret the process if it went forward that way? So if there was, if no, if they take the lease and there's no development, everything's fine. But as soon as development starts, they would have required a land use permit at that point? That's a question for planning, I think.
Well, I would, I would say that I believe there may be dueling legal opinions on this. So municipal attorney may have one version of the truth. And I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not suggesting that they're not correct. But I think you may be right, that, you know, if you're not doing anything yet related to the land use code, then it doesn't pop up until we actually come in for a permit to change land use or whatever.
Right. I mean, I like to speak to it as someone who likes everything to go well. I think it would be good if we don't get to the point where development starts and there has to be a stop work order. But, so maybe there can be back channel communications or something else in the meantime. But it's, I just wanted to check really that the, that this was on the radar of the administration. And it seems like we definitely.
It is. And I'm actually texting Craig on the, or emailing Craig to get some background. So yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
That's a lengthly answer.
Okay. Do you have anything else on that? Brianna, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. So that is it on the three. I'll move to four. Discussion of alcohol, room, marijuana, and other non-residential taxes generated from Crow Creek sources, and what opportunities there are to fund due to NSA. I will take that one, Mike, unless you want to jump in. This is, this has come up a lot recently, and we have, we have a number of questions. One is, you know, what, if any numbers we can get about any of these taxes, about what is coming out of Girdwood. Really, we've had, we've had some trouble getting concrete numbers and feel like we have a right to them, barring some really definitive reasons for why not. So I wonder if we could start there and then move forward a little bit.
It's good. I'm sorry, I missed the very start of the quote. Which taxes are you referring to?
Okay, so we are looking at non-residential taxes generated from the Girdwood area, and what, if any, numbers we can get about the amounts being collected.
Again, I'm going to have to leave my sort of new guy hat, but, but I know who to talk to. I'll talk with the assessor in the Treasurer's Office and see what can be released. So non-residential taxes generated from the Girdwood population base of the municipality. And I presume you're looking at what, what return comes back to the community?
Precisely. And I'd like to throw something out there about that. One of the statements we've had in the past is that we couldn't get, for example, marijuana numbers, because there's only one marijuana business. And so it would essentially give proprietary information about the strength of that business. But I'd like to propose the possibility that we could, if we can't get any other specific numbers, if we could at least get a combination, like these three sources of taxes are bringing, are being collected at X number, that should not, that should not involve proprietary information, that's for any one business. So that is one of the ideas behind. And in particular now, too, something has changed with the room taxes, and we couldn't get that number, we're very interested in that number. In the past, the resort was one of the major, or well, still is one of the major, but in the past, it was essentially the only significant contributor to that tax. But that has, that has changed with hundreds of Airbnbs now. So we are hoping we could get a more accurate number about overall room taxes. Mike, does that sum it up? Did you have anything?
Yeah, not really. I think the, to be, there are two sets of questions here. One is, what's the revenue being generated and come from Girdwood, which would actually include gas tax as well as the other big one. And a number there, either in aggregate or in the, and then I think the question of how that's coming back is a little bit more complex. But just about, and that's the first part would be very welcome, which would be most helpful. So we like both of them.
But that is, that is kind of a, the first question is kind of a two-part question, right? An aggregate income. That's all. And room taxes, very interesting.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else with that? Brianna, do you have anything to add to that?
No, nothing. The only specific I can think of is a previous year with the alcohol tax, we were able to fund and train, the training of Whittier Police and our fire department for some emergency, emergency response training for mental health with that alcohol tax. But that took a longer process, and we would just hope that we could continue that, so our community is receiving the benefit. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. I hope that that segues right into the next one, unless we have anything else on the floor. We're good for that. Okay. That segues right into the next one, excuse me, which is the status of early childhood education projects to be funded by the marijuana tax, approved by the area-wide vote. And the question there is basically, if and how any of those projects are going to be accessible for Girdwood Valley Station. And in particular, our early childcare, Little Bear's project is very interested in that.
May I object to, I think the question is, is who controls the budget for that? It makes determinations to how fund the projects.
Thank you.
For the alcohol tax?
Yeah, for the marijuana, the marijuana tax that was voted in last election cycle.
I will find that out. We, we will, we will find out.
Can I come in? I, I think this is one of the areas where generally the, the allocation of these funds comes through decently. So.
Many of those special taxes do.
Yeah. I think that's correct. I don't know if I want to plant my flag on that answer, but I, I think you are correct there, Mike.
Well, in that case, then allow this to serve as our request to be kept on the map.
Yeah, fair. Noted.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you. All right. Anything else on that? Excuse me. Put it in my hands up.
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on, sixth cemetery bond proposition for spring 2024 municipal election. Actually, Amanda's not with us, but I think, Brianna, you are.
Yes, I could, I could start and happy for staff or anyone to fill in. Tommy O'Malley has been leading this for years and years, and the Assembly helped significantly in the last couple. So we now are starting with AO 2023 58 S version, and the AO cited Girdwood, Eagle River, and Anchorage Cemetery upgrades specifically. And we were about in this position last fall, when Girdwood felt pretty close to having this on the bond for April, and we weren't quite set up with OMB. And this year, it'd be fantastic if we were in place to do so. So the Assembly has been unanimously supportive, and the status of the bond proposition is with Randy Saltz, and Zach Johnson, and Kevin Cross, and hopefully be coming forward as an Assembly item. The other thing that's kind of a question would be perhaps what's happening, and that is our question, what is happening on the Eagle River side, and what would the structure be next? Would, would it stay in, in the Parks and Rec Department, or go back to the Health Department? So cemeteries in the MOA, what is the intent and for the structure?
I guess in general, we've had, the mayor has asked some good questions about why the cemetery currently resides in the Parks and Recreation Department. That's not really formal recreation. He had asked if there wasn't maybe a, a need to create a cemetery, a Department of Cemeteries. If we have more than one cemetery, that was a question he asked as well. We haven't had much more discussion than that about that question. So I imagine it'll be something we'll continue to talk about, but I don't, don't have a position on that, other than that it has been a question for us as well. I think this, the simple answer is, and I don't want to bet you out of my lane, but the most simple approach in the short term would be to have it remain in Parks and Recreation, just because establishing a new department, as you can imagine, would take, you know, extensive work. It's another budget. It's another set of personnel, Assembly approval required for a reorganization of that nature. We could conceivably move it to another department. I'm not sure. Health may on the face of it seem like the best department, but they are right now working with a 30-plus percent vacancy rate, and they're having a real challenge filling, filling staff. So if we were going to put it someplace right now, I wouldn't put it in Health just because of their workload. So that's kind of what I can operate on.
Can I, Tommy O'Malley, could I add some clarity?
Sure. Tommy, do you just need a minute or two on that?
Yes. The, the last ordinance that was passed by the Assembly, AO 2023 58 S, definitively said that cemeteries are an area-wide function of the municipality. The, the department that they're under right now is a Anchorage Bowl-specific service area. So that is something that should be taken into account. Also, with the, our bond, the bond proposal that Zach Johnson, Randy Salty, and Kevin Cross are putting forward, will add quite a bit of more land to the cemeteries, and will add more complexity to the job of running the cemetery. The cemetery at one point in early Anchorage for more than 70 years was its own department. Then it went to Public Works, then it went to Parks and Rec, then it went to Health, and then it's back at Parks and Rec. So it's been shuffled around. So consideration by the administration that it become its own department, although a small one, might be germane to this. For the, for the bond proposal, it would be, I think, a good idea for the administration to join with the Assembly on this very popular proposition for a bond. Showing the support from community councils across the municipality, from Eagle River to Anchorage and down into Girdwood. This is something that people realize that it's time to do, and they want to prepare a place for their loved ones. So far, the administration has been mum on this topic, and most of the work has been done by across-the-aisle cooperation in the Assembly. So since the MOA staff is there today, I'd like it, I'd like the mayor's staff and the mayor administration to consider joining with constituents and citizens across the municipality who, who want to see this happen. Please take that message back to the. Please take that message back to the administration that this is very popular among churches, synagogues, and mosques, and rotary clubs, and anybody that we've talked to, they're ready to, they're ready to go with it. And I believe that the bond proposal that's going to be put forward for next April's election will be, have a positive outcome. So I think the administration should help in any way it can to move this bond proposal forward and get behind it. It's a positive thing for everybody across politics. I think death comes to everyone, and people realize that opting out is not politically correct.
Okay, Tommy. Thank you very much. Did you have anything to add on to that, Brianna?
I don't, thank you, I'd like to hear the response and respect all the time, and I know I was late, so thank you.
Do you have any response?
Well, I will, thank you for your comments on this, Kent Colehaze, I will talk with the administration, the mayor's team about your suggestion, thank you.
Thank you, it's a good one.
Is that all that we have on six? Any other comments about that? Then moving on, we're wrapping up here, public comment, persons on our public comment must state their full name and address, public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. We have a public comment, anyone here for that? Not seeing any hands in movement on that. I would take more to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Done, thank you very much. Thank you so much, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here.